See how the that's amazing, just that you have the THC system problems are working. And then we need to get a neurologist to call us. So. Or then you just go.
No, it'll create an opposite. Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is March the nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, time is now six P M. The regular meeting of the city council, the city council, welcome to order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Ms. Marshall, being that you're leaving with your free papers.
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Bonato.
Here.
Goodall.
Here.
Diego.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Matei.
Miles.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes? Not without motion, please.
Tom Blue.
Second?
Second.
Call vote, please.
Bonato.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Diego.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Matei.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Diego.
Yes. Before we move on, I just wanted to mention, I want to recognize Ms. Marshall for what she's done for the city of Trinidad. And hopefully you'll go on to do good things and expand your horizons and continue to do some work for Trinidad. I think that's, that would be great, so. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
And you're lucky.
Senior day just.
Okay. Item three, policy items and staff reports. Three A, boards and commissions funding. Greg, what you got first?
Um, I put this on here, uh, yeah, request of council member Greg. Yeah, and if you go for sure.
You put it on, you get to share.
I thought. Well, you know, we had discussion about what had happened in the meeting, the chair chairman's meeting of all the boards and commissions. And we're not, we're not doing things correctly or in the right procedure. The boards and commissions are getting money to purchase these. And then we asked staff where it's going and is it gonna fit here? It, you know, the rules and regulations, is it applicable? So my concern is, I don't want that situation to happen again between a member of a, a board or commission and a staff member. What I would like to do is have, number one, a bitter, bitter vetting process. Instead of having the boards and commissions buy something first, let's discuss it with staff and see if it's doable, where we can put it, and, and then go from there. It was my assumption when we did this, that the bulk of the money was to be for travel and training. I had no idea that we were gonna come into these expenses for things that the boards and commissions want. It's a very fine line. I don't want to upset anybody on a board or commission, but I don't want them to go out there and spend money and time for a project that, that's not gonna go to fruition or is changed after, so that's my concern.
Well, let's do this, and then we'll get some discussion from council. Uh, if you have some ideas, I would recommend that you get with Greg and give him some new points on it. I think there are.
Well, I kinda have an idea. I mean, in the, in the purchasing process within the city, not, staff members can't go and buy things without some type of a procedure that they follow. And I think boards and commissions have to follow that same procedure.
Well, let's go and get some discussions here.
I'm not gonna pretend to be an authority, having attended one court, but I, I, I think I find what Ms. Diego was saying to be a valid situation. The meeting that I attended, there was some rather large numbers being passed around, thousands of dollars for objects of artistic nature. And as I sat, I thought, I thought we just scaled back on the funding, where, how can you afford to do this? And, and by what authority was this exercised? And let, let me preface anything that I'm about to say before or now. These boards and commissions are staffed by volunteer people who are well-intentioned, good-spirited, and generally like, in what they're hoping and trying to do. And earlier I kinda suggested that there's a, a kind of a shepherding that needs to happen to make sure that what they're doing is consistent one with the other, and that they don't unnecessarily overlap or worse yet, conflict with what they're trying to do for the betterment of the city. Um, I, I think that, as Karen has said, that, and as was pointed out at the meeting that I attended, their role is kinda advisory. And they don't have any standing or authority to make any purchases, other than amongst themselves, that this would be in the vein and with the, the experience and the education and the discipline that they're working within, to say, we think this would be helpful to the appearance of the betterment of the city, but it will cost this, and then they bring that proposal somehow or another, I don't know how. It, it does happen, but somehow or another, the authorization for that expenditure comes to somebody who has the, the authority to do so. City manager, council, or whomever. But, um, we need to have better, are you a suggestive organization?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's the word.
Communication.
Communicative organization to what we're trying to do. Because it's a pool of, of resource to, to, to motivate to do. And we got to recognize that and harness that energy, but at the same time, we can't create additional problems by lacking the structure.
There's gotta be some, are you fitting?
I am.
I'm sorry. There's gotta be some type of, a structure or a plan in, in place that we could, don't have a project here, a project here, a project here, a project here. And then what does Trinidad look like after all these projects are put in? I think there has to be some organization, there has to be some really serious thought, not only from the boards and commissions, but from staff, to make sure that those projects are done properly.
I think a while back, I mentioned this to Audrey, you know, because this came up a while back with this, and I naturally drew that. Maybe we need some additional guidelines, I think I just threw that out of her, and she thought that was a good idea too, so. That's what you're looking for, some more structured guidelines for the boards and commissions to do it.
Yes, that's what you're saying.
Uh, I thought we had a protocol implemented when we changed the way in which we were gonna be funding our boards and commissions, in which they were going to provide a, uh, proposed, uh, project, and then they were gonna bring that either to the, uh, department heads or to Mr. Sund. So, we had that policy, I thought, kind of structured, and why it's not getting implemented, I'm, I'm not sure. Is that something that's new to you, Mr. Sund, or? Because I believe, I remember, we said that you were going to be approving with the department heads, which projects were feasible at that particular quarter or whatever it was, because we were gonna be funding them periodically throughout the year, correct?
They're more acting independently.
Okay.
Their meeting is, like, there's a group of the, um, heads of the boards and commissions who meet when they allocate money.
Okay, so they amongst themselves, the leaders of each of these commissions say, okay, we're gonna fund yours this time, and...
At least there's been, there's been two meetings, so I mean, it's not like this is a mistake.
Sure, I mean, it's only March right now, so that makes sense, we just started this program. Um, do you feel that it's not working well? Or do you think there's some growing pains that we're going through right now?
Well, I, I think there probably are some growing pains, I, I think there, when things come before, or ideas come from the boards, I think it is a good process to work that through staff, so that we can find out what the logistics are, what the costs are, how it would be implemented. Um, but it also then is incumbent on the staff to do something with it, not just sit on it. So we have to go through a process and make decisions pretty quickly.
Is it possible, then, that we could get some language drafted that is specific protocol, that states for not only the commissions, but also for staff, so that we can work together, si- you know, symbiotically, or symbionically, so that we can get things going? Because otherwise, it feels like this, this new change may have become muddied in the first couple of months of inception, and therefore, we're having these issues where, Mrs. Diego was bringing up these issues, where it, it may be turning into a tug of war over money, and someone saying, my project is more valuable than yours is, and I'm willing to, you know, uh, concede this for now, and then they try to go back later, and then they may not get it again. I don't want there to be hemming and hawing over monies, when really, they're all trying to do something positive and tangible for our community, because that's what they're there for, and, and from their own benevolence and volunteerism. Um, I, I think we just need to hone in on what we have already s- situated for policy and just implement it in a little bit more streamlined manner. I think it's a great idea still, because we came to it because we didn't want people getting money like we have before, you get five thousand dollars, you get twenty thousand dollars, and then if they don't spend it, then that's money that could have been used towards another group, and I think that was the whole premise of why we changed.
That's for Lopez, that was for, um, the marijuana funding and the local nonprofits that were not our boards and commissions. That was the, the process that we talked about, or council talked about, that department heads would get those proposals and then bring them forward to council.
Okay, because I re-
We didn't talk about that specifically to, for our boards and commissions, so we, I think we need to create a protocol.
Okay, I, I agree with that, I, I just recall that it was implemented towards, or directed towards, like, the urban forestry board, towards the creative district, towards all the boards, the parks and rec, where they're not just given a number at the beginning of the year, when we were doing this in September and October, approving all of our budget. That, that's just what I recall, and I may be wrong, but I, I remember we were discussing that we would, they would bring these proposals to you in your office. Now, I remember, uh, a while back, when Mr. Beach was there, and he was facilitating at a lot of the meetings that I was going to, and then, because of, you know, him being busy, we, we passed it on to Mr. Andrew Wallace, who was a facilitator of sorts, as a, a nexus between the, uh, the boards and commissions and staff. Is that something that needs to be re-implemented and looked at again, to have someone in that capacity being that nexus between you and these boards and commissions? Or do you feel it's just better that the chairman or chairwoman of these boards and commissions just directly contacts you, and there's no need for a middleman or middlewoman?
I, I don't, if, I, I think we can work on it, refine the process a little bit better.
Okay.
I guess it was about a week or two ago, that I'd been talking with the chair of one of these boards, and they were saying that it's actually, I was delighted to hear that, it's a, it's a fairly functional process, in other words, people aren't just arguing for their own projects, and that people are saying, ooh, that's a good idea, you know, I'd like to see you get more money this quarter, for whatever reason. But I had no idea that people were spending the money before staff approved it. And now it's making sense, what was going on in arts and culture, or something about, I guess the expenditures were made before staff approved it. I mean, I, I personally view that as, I'm not sure I can piece it together here, but it's gotta be some sort of breach of fiduciary responsibility. Those people aren't elected. Um, city council hires you, you administer staff, that's the gene of fiduciary responsibility, not, not the way apparently it's going now. So thank you for bringing that to, to my attention. I think staff has to have fun, so. And there could be that you don't like any of the projects, and you wanna push it over to the next quarter, you know? There's gotta be an agreement, and I think their recommendation to you should carry a great deal of weight, but it doesn't mean that they, people get to start spending money based on, on that maybe.
Okay, go on.
So I, obviously, last council meeting, I was not very good at articulating, but this is exactly the point I was trying to make at that point, when I strayed off and run my mouth. But this is what I was saying and expressing the frustrations from the boards and commissions, they have a better set of guidelines in which they need to operate under, because they're kinda weaning it without any direction, and they need some direction, and they need some training, um, which we've made sure that they would have money to get that training, how they should function as in boards and commissions, and that's, uh, the exact point that I was trying to make.
Right, but they shouldn't assume that they can spend it.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Staff.
And, and if, if they have a set of guidelines right there, this, you come up with the plans, you take it in front of the boards and commissions, you make a decision on who's projects are gonna go forward, then they go to staff. If they had that printed out, then I think they would feel better about the jobs they're doing also. Um, they would have a direction for them to go. So I'm glad this is coming about, and, and I think it's definitely something that we should do, because these are volunteers, and, uh, yeah, they need direction, uh, along with that funding and how they need to be spending it.
I did, I just have to say, I agree totally with council member Diego, there, I appreciate you bringing this up to, to the council and informing all of us, because this is a great deal that, that, uh, that has happened here, and, uh, I think just like anything else, is, just like the city manager, he's only approved to spend so much money without coming to city council, and I think this is the same kinda habit that city manager, you know? And I, and I credit you, Karen, because, you know, you really had a good eye for this, and it was a, I don't know, you know, the water's under the bridge now, I guess, might as well say. And I think that we have to really look forward and have the staff recommend stuff that's like that.
You know, it's a great idea, you know, and, uh, our boards and commissions are-
They're good.
They're a very important part of the community, and, you know, that could be maybe one of the reasons why maybe we have lost some boards and commission members, because there are no true guidelines for them to follow, so if there's a clear understanding as to what their responsibilities are, and what they can and can't do, might, you know, be able to keep some of these members a little bit longer, because they're, and eliminate, or eliminate some of that frustration that they have. So I believe that. And, and, uh, one other thing I think I'd like to, if we're gonna do this, the other thing I would like to maybe add to the boards and commissions that, you know, especially the ones that we have here in town, uh, we're all on liaisons. And I think what we need to do is, we need to have some guidelines as to what our boards and commission, where our, what the liaison's responsibilities are, and when we, as part of the boards and commissions. And so that the boards and commissions also know what our responsibilities are when we go to their meetings. I think that's just an additional part that I think we need to add to it. Apparently, there is an ordinance in place that was, developed four sixteen of oh four, ordinance number seventeen fifty, section two fifty nine one. And I, a copy of this was provided to the, the Arts and Culture Board that day, and the point made was that the commission shall choose a chair and shall periodically meet for the purpose of developing recommendations to the Trinidad City Council on the issues of art and culture, developing recommendations. But yet, while I was there, they had a presentation of prototypes of smaller mushrooms and larger sunflowers that were, if my notes are correct, five thousand dollars for the forty-two of the smaller ones, and I, I can't remember the number involved, but they were like fourteen thousand dollars for the bigger sunflowers. So we're talking about twenty-six thousand dollars worth of expenditure for some kind of small art, and nobody really knew where it was coming, or for what purpose. And, and I maybe that was, maybe I misunderstood, maybe the idea was not so much for them to authorize the purchase, as it was to entertain the presentation made by the vendor and, and bring that to us. But I, I kinda got mixed up in what exactly the role was they were trying to do, until clarification was provided, you don't have the authority to act on anything, only to make recommendations. And I would presume that this also applies to all the other boards and commissions. So there is, there are rules and regulations in place, it's just that they're not being followed, and maybe to your point, or somebody's point about training, and, and so forth, that, that might be important, that, uh, we all get on the same, but as we have the charter, they have this ordinance to regulate what they can and can't do.
Yeah, and that likes it on top, that likes it, but us as the agalons to the different boards and commissions, when they start crossing that line, we can draw them back and say, you need to look at this before you get into that. And I think that's one of the responsibilities that we-
You know, I've served on a number of boards, uh, both in the private sector and in the public sector, and I've never participated in a board where I didn't get a board pack, which would have that ordinance on it.
Do a thing.
And if, in order to get on the board, you have to sign and say-
Yeah.
I read this.
Yeah.
And so you can't say, oh, well, you didn't tell me. You know, so.
Good talk.
You know, these are volunteer positions, and there's not a lot in it for people, but something along those lines, I think, too.
And like, and I think just keeping it, you know, short and simple, rather than getting too crazy, I think, because otherwise, if it's too thick, then they're not gonna read it, but if you give them just a few pages, then we're out to-
And even if the board or commission has a chairperson, which the purpose of this meeting was to elect one, but, but even if they have a chairperson, there has to be someone in a position of, of ability to shepherd the activities of what they're trying to do.
Right? I think we're all on the same, I think we're all of the same opinion. Okay, item three B, Jim Fernandez recognition, I think, which is not, I think that's something that you have been talking about for some time. Did you wanna bring that up, was that Greg or who's?
I'd have it. Mr. Diego, is that, uh, for a long time, uh, I've been considering, Mrs., Mrs. Bolton was the first one that really considered this years back, and, uh, we were trying to change the North Lake Dam to Jim Fernandez's name, but with the planning and zoning and what's stated in the charter, it's kinda impossible for us to do this. So, I've been pushing this to give Mr. Fernandez a plaque, some sort of a plaque, and I called him day before yesterday, and I asked Jim, I said, you know, with all the work that you put in for the city, I'm thinking about trying to get the council and the city staff to get a placate for you in your recognition for what you have done with the city. And his first words out of his mouth was not wow, or thank you, or whatever it was. He told me, he said, you know what, Joe, I don't wanna take all the credit. He said, I had a lot of good staff people that worked underneath and helped me. And that's the kind of man Mr. Fernandez is, you know, he's a good friend of mine, I've known him for a long, long time, I've known all his family and that here in Trinidad, and, uh, with this house really kinda deteriorating and stuff like that, I did call Mr. Sund and ask him, and I called, talked to Audrey about it, and, uh, I thought maybe we could just make a placate, some certain type of plaque, and put it, I was thinking about putting the plaque right out here by the Liberty Bell, by our little bell on here in City Hall, so a lot of people could read it when they come to the city of Trinidad, and, uh, like I said, he mentioned several people on his staff, like Mr. Beale, Mr. Ramirez, and all that. And I was just thinking if we could do that for him, and then maybe thank him, just the staff members, put a staff, not their whole names, because there's so many staff members, we could just put it, who worked under Mr. Fernandez, would be a good idea. I mean, uh, this man is really great to our community, is nice for us, and, uh, I just felt the time is now, that I only have like eight more months, I'm sitting on this council before I'm terminated, and, uh, I'm gonna be like him, I don't wanna have the credit for me doing that, I wanna have the credit of all of us there. So, if it's up to council, or if it's up to city staff, I sure would appreciate if we could do this for Mr. Fernandez, and, uh, just put a plaque right there by the bell, if that's okay.
Mr. Goodall, any opinion?
I think, uh, what was it, forty years?
Forty years, yes.
Forty years is a long time. Um, any recognition, whether it be in order? That's all I have.
No question, I agree. You know, I think it's, uh, noble that you've stuck on this thing, so.
I'm a good person.
I'm not giving up.
Devil's advocate again. But if Mr. Fernandez did a wonderful job, he's a friend of mine as well, but how many other people do we have that work for the city that have forty years of service? How can we single out one person without upsetting the others? These guys hang with us for a couple more years, they're gonna have forty years.
When their time comes, it'll come, you know what I'm saying? It's a point of view, it's a point of view, Karen, it's not just, just a show of care or recognition, it's what, it's what he stood for for this city.
Oh, I understand.
I know a lot of people have, a lot of people have, uh, have done an excellent job in this town, excellent job. And if we could name a golf course, street up there for, for Mr. Hagar, which has done a lot of things for our town, I think this man has a right to have his name for the friends in the hall. That's all.
Can I add a comment now?
Yeah.
What if we were to maybe create something a little different, but still recognizable for our staff members who have been here? Maybe create a wall of like forty-year-plus people. Mr. Fernandez would be the first, being how this is, how it's been started.
I was just thinking that.
And then we could always add to it for those who have served our community.
How many people do we have that over forty years have served us, Audrey?
There's three that are currently working downstairs.
Three?
Can I just volunteer something? I think it should be somebody who's had an impact on the city, you know, somebody in supervisory capacity or department head capacity.
Okay.
You know, someone who's really had vision for the city and has stepped up.
That's a good point.
Karen, would you turn that up?
No, I'm just, I'm thinking that, did Mr. Fernandez agree with having that plaque put up there?
Yeah, well, he told me, Joe, he said, all he told me was that I don't want all the credit. That's all he told me. He talked to Mr. Sund, and he told Mr. Sund the same thing, that he didn't want all the credit, but, you know, the man did his job. That's what I, so.
He said, if you're gonna do something like that, um, do something that just recognizes all the people that worked during that period of time, and all the things we accomplished.
Yeah.
I, I think that recognition for effort is, and reward for the effort is, is certainly appropriate, particularly for those with longevity, and that have suffered, and, and, endured and overcome the trials and tribulations of what we were trying to do. I think that, uh, Mr. Lopez has a great idea, rather than have a plaque for a person, to have an award or a recognition for many people who meet certain qualifying terms, to your point, Michelle, about things that, that, what they have done, to, to, what they have done through their leadership, through their dedication, through a variety of different qualifying characteristics, that, uh, represent and signify those things that we owe dear and near to our hearts in terms of more than longevity. And I think councilman Bonato has a great idea to make that in a prominent place, where visitors and guests to our city will be able to see that and acknowledge and recognize those persons who've been named or listed. Um, it, it probably could even be a retroactive thing, to some extent, I mean, I don't mean to delay your plan, but I'm sure there are many other people who have come to God and done things well for the city of Trinidad, and because of those efforts, we are in the better shape that perhaps we will be doing it again. Uh, I think it's a good idea, a, a wall of fame, if you will, or something of that, that nature. Um, I recall as Joe was talking at one point about relaying, renaming the North Lake, um, when I was, was working with the school board, the football field was renamed Dutch Noble Field at Minor Stadium, rather than changing the name of Minor Stadium, is what I'm trying to say. So there was a deserving recognition for the many years of commitment to the athletic program, Mr. Lopez, or, uh, some of Lubbock Field, but CSU is a different kind of thing in the stadium. But the point is, there are ways, creative ways to recognize the efforts, the people who have invested their life in, in trying to do their job, and sometimes they're showing up every day and going there and putting your notes to the, to the grindstone, is worthy of that recognition. I mean, at a time when most people change jobs in a few years, like, I have, my youngest daughter's had more jobs in ten years out of college than I've had my entire life, but that's the way things go now. And I'm not saying she's unstable, I'm saying that that's just-
I don't want you to think that I'm against this, it's just that I, I am for fairness across the board. I mean, Mr. Fernandez has done great things, but there are a lot of people that work for the city.
And to that end, if we can come up with some sort of a recognition mentality, that, that says, what do people need to do to get, to, to deserve this honor of inclusion in this place, this reverent place of, of recognition? And prominent places right out, right out of the city hall. And prominent places right out, right out of the city hall, adjacent to the bell, as you suggested, that's a great idea.
Do you think that'd be a good idea to be able to add other names to it later down the road and maybe on the side or something?
I don't see why not. I just don't want a wall that...
Right. Yeah.
You have a wall of names? Wall names or something like that, you know.
Well, it's something tasteful.
Yeah.
It has to be tasteful.
Maybe it could be called the Wall of Heroes.
You know, Greg, why don't you take that to E team and see what they come up with?
Yeah, we can come up with something.
And bring it back to us. See what they can help with. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks for the thought. Okay, item four petitions or communications are all written. Do we have anybody signed that's signed up? Start with that. Brad Kirby.
Hello, everybody. I just want to thank everybody for the St. Patrick's Day parade that went off without a hitch. We had probably thirty people in the parade and two hundred people standing in line, receiving candy and everything. It wasn't bad for a ten-day notice. So next year, we're starting to plan for the next one. So next year should be twice as big, if not bigger. Also, while I was on this, I think parades are good things for the city of Trinidad to have. There's a lot of, when people come in town to us, they like to see little parades in town. That's why I did mine on Saturday. And I think Saturday's the perfect day to have. I would suggest that Trinidad does more parades. I'd like to see one in April, two in May, and two in June, and all the way through. Maybe one every other week or two a month. Also, I suggest also it could be a board for parades. So a person that wants to do a parade can go to that board. And that board knows how to advertise it, get the word out, get all the okay's for it, and not just something, another thing Marty to do. So is this a suggestion? And I just want to thank everybody for coming up with a good day.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for putting it together that way.
Ms. Marshall.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Space to create has closed. It's been a very exciting adventure. I want to share with you some of the communications that we're receiving from across the state. First American Title Insurance says, congratulations, City of Trinidad. We are so happy to be a part of this exciting project. RBC Capital, our investor, says, congratulations to everyone. Looking forward to my first construction site visit to Trinidad and saying hello to all the local folks. For the record, I'll buy anyone a beer who needs a beer.
Yes.
Yeah, right, he's the money guy. And then from City Community Capital, who underwrote the project, congratulations, everyone. Looking forward to making my way there and seeing the finished project. Very excited to be partners with the city of Trinidad. To ArtSpace, from ArtSpace, thank you, Trinidad. We love you. We're looking forward to finishing this project with you. From Gregory Goldberg, who chaired this committee and represents Citibank All. On behalf of everyone, City congratulates ArtSpace and the city of Trinidad for pulling off this very important and transformative project. It took tenaciousness and determination to get to this day. We always knew you would do it. It's great to work with this entire group, and we look forward to seeing this project come to fruition. I'll take you up on that beer. Those are the communications from the partners. Additionally, Grand Lake has texted and said, congratulations to Trinidad. Thank you for leading the way. Ridgeway has also texted and said, congratulations to Trinidad. We hope to be about a year behind you. So we did close, and the final number on closing was eighteen million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And we want to say, the organizations that were involved... Do you need that number one more time?
Yes, please.
Eighteen million. It's that page. It's a long...
Three eighty-six, seven twenty-nine.
Three eighty-six, seven twenty-nine. Seven twenty-nine point zero zero. There are no cents. We came in on even dollar. The organizations, of course, thank you to the city council and to the staff of the city of Trinidad for making the project possible. ArtSpace, our development partner. We wouldn't be here without them. Caritas Housing Finance Authority, providing the major funding. Citibank, who underwrote the loans. RBC, the Royal Bank of Canada, who provided the investor group. The Trinidad Housing Authority, Terrence Murray Shire and the board of the Trinidad Housing Authority. If they had not come aboard as partners, this project would not have happened. And they really went to the wall with this work for us. Then, of course, grants from History Colorado, from the Department of Local Affairs, from Dola Housing, from the Betra Foundation, the Gate Foundations, and El Pumar Foundation. So those are our funders and our partners. And then finally, just as a closing, in the eighteen eighties, there was a lot of discussion after Colorado was, had become a state of state. And Denver was the interim capital. Denver was kind of the interim capital. But there was entire discussion from eighteen seventy-six to eighteen eighty-one, when Denver was chosen by popular vote, sixty-six percent, to become the capital. And in part of that speculation, Trinidad was a contender for the state capital. And one of the headlines that ran in the papers back then was, as goes Trinidad, as goes the state of Colorado. And I have always remembered that quote. We were the first school district.
Yes.
We had the very first junior college. We were the first in the eighties to have the Welcome Center. I know there are so many other firsts that I'm not mentioning, but we are now the first state-of-the-art project. So I would contend, it's not eighteen eighty, but as goes Trinidad, goes the state of Colorado. So congratulations to you for making this happen.
Wait, do you...
Yeah.
In light of your tenure here and all that you did and how you invested yourself in...
Yeah.
You held a microphone. You put that and you say, you got it. And you dropped your mic and right off the...
Totally. Wait, wait, hold on. Off the mic, that observation. Oh, yeah. What a neat way to end.
Well, Michelle, how appropriate. And Tara, as I said, at your going away party, you were the field marshal, field general, the capo de tutti capo, all rolled into one. And it was just a marvel to watch you. It's like, pop, sell. You know, did you something? Did you deliver?
What Michelle's referring to is that we were trying to close, and there was always a document pending. So as soon as we came up...
Our snowstorm.
From the call, I would start calling the entity and saying, how do we get this document done? When is it going to get done? What can we do?
But how appropriate for it to close at three twenty-nine.
Right.
Right, one minute before your going away party.
Right.
On the week that you're going away, please go away feeling satisfied.
I will, totally.
Forever grateful to you.
Thank you.
I want to say that I watched her with that closing, and I've never seen anybody truly... It's true, because so many irons in the fire are going in every which direction, on the computer, on the phone, back to the computer, to us. And talking to the various people, I just admire them.
On mute, on the call, or I was on my cellphone.
I admire the capabilities that you have.
Thank you.
And I want to take those capabilities to the rest of the area. And thank you for everything you've done for Trinidad.
Well, thank you. And regardless of whether you're an elected official, you're an appointed official, or you're those people just over my shoulder to the left, we all work for our community, all of us. Every day, we work for our community, and it's been an extreme honor. So thank you.
And we had a great team between her and council and staff, that everybody had input.
Everybody brought it in.
Last week, we had some sit downs. And Audra was there and saying, okay, we didn't, somebody didn't adopt the I, somebody didn't adopt the T's.
Audra has kept all of our people who are on track with the project, absolutely.
So anyway, everybody that participated in this, thank you.
Thanks.
Got a couple of items here. One thing I wanted to do is, I'm not able to go, but Carlos is going up to bid farewell to Sam Mamet from CML. So I asked Audra today to type something up and said, Dr. Mordone, we're going to all sign it before we all read what it says. March nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, Sam Mamet calling this colleague. Dear Sam, we feel that it is important to put into words our heartfelt thanks for all the hard work and time we have given to this city, as well as all of the other Colorado towns and cities that you advocated so diligently on behalf of us. Is with regret that we lose you as the CML Executive Director. But we wish you and your family all the best for the future. As you know, the money's no better in retirement than the hours are. Good point. We hope you take some time and enjoy a stress-free, work-free lifestyle for a while. May your former busy place be replaced with rest and relaxation. Congratulations on your retirement. We wish you so much, we wish you much happiness in the years ahead. And on behalf of the city of Trinidad, city council, and city staff, we thank you for your service to Colorado communities, especially Trinidad, because we were your friends. We're your favorite. Sincerely, all of council.
That's great.
Good job, Tara. Thank you.
That's Audra.
Good job, Audra.
Okay, if you want to just...
Audra is the writer.
Okay. Pass that down.
She edits everything we write.
Mr. McJ, will you do the little...
Hold on.
The hole in the catalytic converter is infected.
Bumblebee car.
I don't think that one is...
That's a bumblebee car.
No. It's like a hole in its very bottom. Do you like me to get that framed or want it folded? Put it on, but it seems fitting.
Yeah, if we can maybe get a little frame for it, you're all right. It's early morning.
Thursday morning?
Thursday morning, so we'll give it back. I'll get it to you. Thank you. As it works out, I'll probably leave it also, because I've got a meeting at three to five.
Okay.
Go. Just go ahead and pass that down to the...
Well, I know, because I thought I was going to leave it with it.
And back, Audra.
Thank you.
And I've got one more letter here. And it came from Governor, Governor Jared Polis, March fifth, two thousand and nineteen. It has my name on it, but this is for all of us. Says, Dear Mayor Rico, thank you for taking the time to share your community's support of public lands. And I think what he's talking about here is the Fisher's Peak Bill. It's implied, it doesn't say Fisher's Peak, but it's implied here. To share your community's support of public lands and for sharing the recent developments that are taking place in Trinidad. Together, we are building a future where every Colorado community can take great strides toward a brighter future, and Trinidad is a shining example of this potential. I'm happy to hear that your community is embracing the economic opportunity that protected public lands provide. Public lands are not just at the center of our identity as Coloradans. They are, for many communities, vital to our economic prosperity. Coloradans understand that the protection of our public lands is a protection for our economic future. And I enjoy the opportunity to work with you and local leaders from across the state to further these efforts. With that said, I look forward, I look forward to having another visit in Trinidad to witness firsthand the economic successes taking place across your city. My team will be in touch when the time comes for another visit to your community. Please stay in touch. Sincerely, Jared Polis, Governor. So Greg, pass that down to Greg. Okay, onto item five, consent agenda approval. Item A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of March fifth, two thousand and nineteen, and special meeting minutes of March seventh, two thousand and nineteen. Item B, approval of resolution authorizing an application to History Colorado for the Fox West Theater. And that is a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that will have a forty-thousand-dollar match if it comes to fruition, from the sale of the historic tax credits. Item C, appointment of Mike Valentine as acting city manager, pursuant to section six point three of the city of Trinidad Home Road Charter. Item D, appointment of County Commissioner Luis Lopez, which has been in the office, only in the audience, to the Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority. Item E, approval of resolution approving submission of a grant application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs to seek funding for the sewer transmission line project. And that's to help for the replacement of the six-thousand-feet of line needed that we're working on. Item F, approval of the bills. And item G, approval of payroll, March ninth, two thousand and nineteen, to March twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen. Do they have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Do they have a vote, please?
Bernado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes, with the removal of D from me, as the candidate is my brother.
Mitten?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
He didn't call my name.
Regal?
Say yes.
Yes.
I marked you down as a yes.
You're just, your mind's just ten minutes ahead. No problem.
All right.
I'm sorry.
On to item six, public hearings, we have none. Item seven, we don't have any unfinished business. Item eight, miscellaneous business. First reading in ordinance, authorizing a lease purchase arrangement for the acquisition of a twenty-nineteen freight liner with Versa-Lit Blackfoot, and setting a hearing date for consideration. The set ordinance at six p.m. on April the second, two thousand and nineteen. Could I have someone introduce, please? I'll introduce. Okay, do they have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Mike, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Actually, I guess, Director.
I guess, Director?
Yeah. This is, I'll add a little bit. This is a truck that you approved, the purchase of last year for purchase this year. And we've got some creative financing that Cheryl's coming up with.
I'd like your creative financing.
So this is going to be a tax-exempt lease purchase, similar to the ladder truck that was purchased in December. The rate is three point eight nine. When we purchased the ladder truck, it was three point eight seven, so the rate's not much higher. We did solicit financing from two others, and one of them backed out at the end just saying that they don't provide tax-exempt leasing purchase programs. And the other was not much on it.
Can I just point something out?
Sure.
Interest rates were lower in November. So the fact that we're two basis points higher, that's actually a better execution than November. So my compliments.
That's why we love you.
You understand this. What it really boils down to is that it's a vehicle for a hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. And that equates to, of course, we'll have a fifty-dollar down payment, which is over above that. But it boils down to forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents a year, is what it's going to go down to. Any comments from council?
We need it, and we can afford it, as well.
Is it complete? I mean, when we buy it, you don't, there's no add-ons on to this?
Nope, that's complete. Ready to, there's people up in the, it's our lives.
I think we should take it up to Fisher's Peak.
And this is replacing something? Okay, the one that it's replacing, can we do something rather than park it? So we can manage it in town?
In town?
Yes.
How many years is this planned? Three years or four?
Four.
Four. No.
Question? Call vote please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Regal?
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muttain?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item 8B, a word of bid to Schultz Construction for the construction of the Shell Building for Noah's Ark Animal Shelter in 1921 East Main Street. Do they have votes please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Mate.
That's fine, um, as you've seen in your council communication, good evening, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of council. If you've seen in your council communication, we've been negotiating with Schultz Construction for quite a while, about six months actually. That was part of our deal with to negotiate and work with them, and we have come up with what we believe to be a workable number and a workable building. And we're anxious to get started.
Yay.
Yay, yay.
I thought this was in, uh, that we were, we were, the city was gonna prepare the Shell.
That's what this is.
Huh?
That's what this is. We're not gonna do ourselves, we have hired them.
The city is responsible for Noah's Ark construction of the Shell. We've hired a contractor to do that, there was never, we weren't going to use city workers to do the construction now. The city itself is providing the Shell, then Noah's Ark.
Yeah.
Then Noah's Ark will provide the interior.
We provided $400,000 to pay for the Shell.
To build, to help build, this is for the Shell, I thought it was supposed to, our own guys were supposed to do the Shell.
You too.
And how much was that bid?
Uh, this, currently we're at $480,000. We started out at 749,660.
So we're still $80,000 down the creek then, right?
We, yeah, we'll have to make some money, we're, we're a lot closer than we've been.
Exchange, okay. Who's good off?
I'm nothing, I'm just happy it's finally coming to you, yeah.
Is this gonna move forward, the build-out, and what, what's going on with, I mean, I know we're not involved, but-
We are not involved with that portion.
But people will say, okay, so when's it, when's it gonna be except for Noah's Ark?
Exactly, uh, Noah's Ark is actively pursuing grants and donations from many sources, I can say that. I'm not telling you the numbers and who is all is involved directly, but whenever we have meetings, they're saying that they are still pursuing things. And they have some money already put aside, some substantial. I wanna say 200 and some thousand, but I don't know if that's happening yet.
And if any of you are interested, they're planning ribbon cutting on 25th at 11 o'clock. Not ribbon cutting.
Groundbreaking. What date was that again?
25th at 11 o'clock.
Mr. Mayor? Yes?
If I can, uh, whatever happened to that land that was up there by Almond Hill, did, did, did they ever sell that land, or?
They still own it. They still own it.
Mr. Sawyer?
Yeah, Mr. Sawyer? Who owns it?
They, they do, it's, uh, Noah's Ark still owns it.
And they got, they found, trying to sell that land, or, or do you know?
That would be, if they could use that, they could go into this building and, you know.
We had some money put aside from the sale of the, that property that they're currently on, was like $100,000 from Mr. Chuminow. Is that gonna be applied for this?
That's, that's in the fund.
So, yeah. Okay, because I just saw the source of funds is just from the marijuana monies. I didn't know if that was gonna be utilized.
It's actually, 400 from marijuana, the 100 from Chuminow, and then Noah's Ark has some additional money, but it's-
Okay. Rico?
Uh, this is a, you know, you talk about ups and downs, this is a huge up for me personally. Those three people that are sitting in the back row there, Debbie and John Anderson, and, uh, Pat Futter, have done, worked tirelessly for, God, I don't know how many years, but I just want people to understand that the city's putting in the money for the Shell. The, the shelter, uh, Noah's Ark is gonna put in at least 480, if not more, to finish the inside and equip. So, I think they're doing their fair share. You know, we talk about sustainability in a community. This organization has been active and, uh, for over 20 years. And they're matching, the city's gonna own this building, but they're going to contribute to the interior finishing this building. And I think it's a testament to the Andersons and all the people that have gone before them and all the people that are gonna come after them to make this a viable project. This is a really good day for me to, I mean, sad in some ways, great, because we're getting the shelter that we've been promising people in this community for 20 years. Thank you, Tom, I appreciate it. Thank you, Greg.
Long after, long overdue. And thank you, Karen, for paying the way.
I haven't done anything.
Yeah, thank you for, all of Noah's Ark for being patient with what's been going on to try to get this thing done. And you'll probably stay on top of the, they finish out, you know, the finishing project. And periodically maybe in a moment or two, Greg, to get back to, to see where they are, what they're funding, to see how close they're getting to that.
Mr. Peter, just let me know about more of the funding.
Okay.
I'm gonna work on it a little.
Anyway, thanks for all the work and getting that, the number from that 700,000 down to the ORF.
That was, that was a lot of work, it took a long time, and I really appreciate everybody who participated in that process.
I, I understand completely what it's like to take from 700,000 to, I was wondering if we'd be able to get it down that low. That was a big question in my mind. And it's hard to take off 100,000, because that's really been compromised, building a whole awful lot.
Thanks.
Good job, thanks.
Thank you.
There's no further discussion, call vote please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Regal?
Absolutely, yes.
Is there no devil advocate in that one?
No, there's no devil anywhere. Yes, yes, yes.
Muttain?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Okay, item 8C, consideration of bid results for the purchase of a dump truck for the gas department? Do they have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Mike, what you got?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Basically, um, I put out, uh, some specs for a dump truck, and we received four bids. And my recommendation is go, to go with, uh, 2020 International with a coy stock body for $92,405. It was budgeted for, I, I went out to bid for this truck last year, they're in dire need. The current truck they have is a 1990, um, and it's, uh, seems better days. It went through the water department first, then to the gas department, so, uh, the bids came in a little higher than I expected. So I had to step back and re-budget for this year, and re-budget it accordingly, and, and actually got a, got a better price this year than last year, but that's, last year's was 102,000, a little bit. But I didn't bring forward to you, it's like, didn't have that budgeted, so.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Mate?
Fee, fee management is necessary.
Yep.
That's why we got trucks that we're using that are 28 years old.
We can't keep doing that.
Can we take it to Fisher's Peak?
Just, just don't leave them jumping around town.
Exactly.
No, I'm fine.
No, let's get some new vehicles, we need them.
Any other questions? Thank you, okay. Call vote please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muttain?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item D, resolution approving and implementing a City of Trinidad Title VI Plan in Conformance with the United States Policy on Non-Discrimination. Do they have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? I think it's something that has to be done. Ms. Wolf, you have any thinking on that too?
Um, I could, sorry. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I can provide an example that might help understand the purpose of this. So, say you're fixing potholes in roads, and you have a street in one part of the town that's, people are poor. Maybe there's a lot of people who speak Spanish, they don't speak English, or maybe another language. And then you have another street in town that has potholes, and it's a wealthier part of town, and those people feel more comfortable being articulate with the city and stating, hey, I need my potholes fixed. And if you fix the street where people are more vocal, and you delay fixing the street in a poorer neighborhood or where people don't speak English, that's prejudicial. So, the, um, Department of Transportation for Colorado receives federal funding. Well, the federal government requires that we all follow the Civil Rights Act. You're already familiar with the ADA, American with Disabilities Act, this is similar. Except we don't have to go out and fix hundreds of things that are wrong or not up to standard. This is a matter of having a venue for people to have a voice if they feel discriminated against. It can also happen if we hire a company that we contract with to fix something, and a city worker or an employee of that company that we contract with conducts an act that's discriminatory, that citizen or visitor can come to the city and file a complaint. So, because we accept federal funds, we are required to have a Title VI plan. So, and in your documents explains that Title VI is anti-discrimination, basically.
Benado, you have any questions for me?
I don't. Nothing.
No, sounds like a reasonable.
Yeah.
Karen?
Nothing.
Another question I had, and I, I saw this in here, that, so if somebody has a complaint, do they originally bring that to you?
They can bring it to anyone at the city, I'm the one who handles it. I can meet with the person, make sure they have help filling out the form. If they need help in another language, trying to get that resource to the person. Um, and then I file it, and then I make sure that I follow annual documentation with CDOT.
At what point does it go beyond you with a complaint if there, if there's an issue? I know it talked in there in the documents.
To, to anyone who's managing a project, or to a department head, city manager?
No, no, I'm talking about, there's a go, because talk about having to go to a different level upstate.
Oh. Oh, yes, yes, sorry.
Can you, can you explain that?
I have, I would have to file any complaint directly with the office. CDOT has an office for, that includes civil rights, it's a, it's also a business-related office. So they make sure that contracts follow these federal laws. So yes, it does also automatically go to CDOT, and then they review it as well. And then they can provide us with assistance for handling complaints.
Okay, so, if you, we can handle a complaint locally here, it's a done deal. Yeah, but if it's not handled locally, then it's gotta go further, is that what you're saying?
Well, it will always go to the CDOT office, the state office, that was a good question.
I do know if we can handle some of those locally, just be done with as possible.
Well, we, we would need to handle it, but they provide that assistance, and then correct if we can, then they also provide assistance. Another thing that's required is like ADA training for staff. We also have to train staff in understanding Title VI. So that no one is being discriminatory.
Now, this plan, does it have to be council-approved?
Yes, the resolution was required. You are adopting, basically by adopting the plan, you're adopting the policy, and you are also approving the administration of it.
Okay, and it talks about every three years it has to be revisited? We'll have to come back to council every three years?
Yes. And be reviewed by CDOT. So we have a person in the CDOT office who already reviewed this, and then Audra reviewed it as well. It's gone through the channels already, through staff, and through CDOT. They probably should have been doing this a long time ago, but I think they're catching up, they as in CDOT, because we've received federal funding for years, so.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Call vote please.
Benado?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muttain?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Council reports.
Mr. Benado?
I'd just like to say one thing on the council report, you know, that's been concerning me lately too, and I had a discussion with Mr. Sun about this. And, uh, I think we ought to try to get our flag, and our flag pole back up on Simpson's Rest for the number of veterans that, you know, that we have living here. According to the Mr. Sola, he's, uh, the exalted ruler, I guess, of the Alps as well. He has afforded us that the flagpole is completely broke, it's broke pretty bad, and it can't be welded anymore. And at that time, when we first put the flagpole up there on Simpson's Rest, we, I'm saying that the Alps sponsored that, was, that flagpole at that time was like $7,000. So, I, I'm kind of anxious of trying to get our flag back up there. I'm, I have been in discussion with Mr. Sola, and he's been on, what kind of report was that, Mr. Sun, that FundMe, GoFundMe page or something about?
Oh, they, they've talked about establishing a GoFundMe for donations, but that can take a long time.
Yeah, really, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a liability right now to the city, right now. In case that pole falls down and got her signed up there and stuff like that, or something gets hurt. And, uh, I think we ought to take under consideration to, to see between the Alps and, uh, individual donations in the city, if we could get that flagpole back up there, and Old Glory flying back up there for our veterans, because, uh, I don't know how long it's been now, now it's several, several months. A lot of people ask me, where's the flag, so, and I tell them that's what's going on, so. It's just a thought in my mind, that personally, maybe we could look at that, maybe if we could get that some way going again, get a flagpole, stuff like that.
If you're asking about, um, Rick at Grand Reynolds that runs the show for Calendem, I think part of the money they raised this year from the car and bike show during Santa Fe Trail Days, I believe that money is going to a new flagpole and a flag. It seems like Rick said something to me about that. But I'll follow up, or if you're down there asking.
Yeah, because they asked, they asked me for donations to help the elders.
Yeah, I think when he had me put up posters and stuff, that's what he said. So I think they're definitely, last year they, they do two things, they raise money for Wounded Warriors motorcycles to be built. The second thing they're doing is the flagpole this year.
Well, the flagpole that we have up there now, when we first got that pole, was supposed to withstand wings up to 80 miles per hour. And it's not enough.
Not enough.
Yeah, not up there on Simpson's Rest, because-
It, it can be, but no matter what, when, when you got a flag that big, metal can only be bent so many times before a worker is-
So that's just a thought, we can just kind of keep that in mind, maybe we could look at that in the future.
Alright.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Benado?
So I attended the Parks and Rec meeting last night. We had a presentation from Josh and Mallory from the Giddy Up Bicycles on the bike share system. So they have a Facebook page, have started sharing, that's out there. Encourage everyone to visit that and like it, and get that out there. It's $3 for 30 minutes, they currently have 14 bikes in town. So they're geared up, about ready to go for the tourist season coming in. So they're excited about that. They did receive a word that they will not be getting the Americor volunteers this year. So they are, um, in the process of forming a, uh, trail group, possibly a 501(c)(3) to go with that. Um, they're trying to get that, uh, put together ahead of hopefully some training they'll receive. Uh, we had two gentlemen from the gas department, one from the wa, water department, received training on the new trail making machine. I was out there a little bit for that, showing them how to make the trails. So they're in hopes of coming back and getting some training on how to lay out trails for our outdoor recreation. So, um, they're trying to put together, I'm sure Audrey, you'll be hearing from them, a survey for the public to get input on the Parks and Rec, um, for outdoor recreation. They, it said something about Mr. England had done a survey that was mailed out or something, so I figured I'd give a heads up. They're probably gonna be hollering at you, see if they can dig that up to get an idea of what to put. Um, one of the proposals they have for spending money this year is, Mr. Lackey's coming forward with a, uh, proposal for some stocking of the Purgatory River with fish. He said he approximated close to 5,000 visitors yesterday, last year, that were here to fish the river in tourism. So those were some pretty impressive numbers, if they're factual. Um, he showed us some pictures of some probably close to five-pound German Browns that people have pulled out fly fishing out of the river. They're doing a study now to see what it would take for a steady flow to sustain it with, uh, that kind of stocking or of fish. And last but not least, they asked me to ask about the lighting for the tennis courts, Mr. Beach. They said they know the weather's been bad, and they understand the delays. They just wanted to know if we might have any kind of timeframe when we may be getting those. We know the holes are dug and everything else. Is that, any kind of schedule on that, sir?
The holes are dug, the poles are in.
Yeah.
The netting is, it, public works department waiting to get put up, we have to get a, uh, excuse me, a man lift in there to put the netting up. And as soon as we get the netting up, the lights will be put on top of them, which should be within, within a month for most.
Fantastic.
Every time we get out there, it starts snowing, and then it gets thawed, and then it's turned back to black.
Thank you, sir.
We talked about that this morning, actually, about the netting.
Appreciate that, and then last but not least, probably should have started- Appreciate that. And then last but not least, probably should've started with this. I just wanted to say thank you to the city staff who afforded me a few minutes of time to, um, apologize for my actions at the last council meeting. Y'all didn't have to be generous with your time and allow me any time at all to speak with you, and you were all very accommodating, and I appreciate, appreciate that very much.
Did you mention about the, uh, that the Parks and Rec was going after a five oh one C three possibly?
They're looking to form a trail group, and with that, to form a five oh one C three to, would afford them to apply for grants and stuff for some of the stuff they're doing.
That wouldn't be in a conflict of any kind?
They wouldn't be aboard of the city?
No, no, this is a whole separate group.
You're not making that there was a conflict?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we had a, since the last, uh, council meeting, we had a, a board meeting of the Creative District, and a couple of items to report. Um, we approved, um, sponsorship of the Creative Boot Camp. You may have seen that in the newspaper. It's a program that's going to be jointly funded by the City of Raton and Trinidad. And it's going to be, it's not what you think, which is you're gonna learn accounting and credits and credits, and fundamentals of advertising. It's really much more on a macro level. The people who, what, what's the name of the group?
Creative Startups.
Creative Startups. Um, they made a terrific presentation, and really what they do, and it so needs to be done, is to question entrepreneurs about whether they, everyone thinks they have, but whether they've examined the value proposition. The value proposition simply stated is, what problem are you solving? And can you charge enough to solve that problem to be sustainable? And, you know, a lot of people think, oh, well, if I, if I just build something I'd like to buy, everyone else is gonna buy it. But that's not the way it works. So anyway, I think it's gonna be interesting. It's going to require, I think at this point, we're talking about a hundred dollar registration fee, which is just enough so that someone has an incentive. If you give someone something for free, that's how much they value it, so. Um, so anyway, we're taking, uh, applications at this point, and, uh, the newspapers are doing a good job of getting it out there, but if we talk to people, send them to Creative District if you, if you think that can be helpful to them. Uh, the other thing is, we're a little over a month away from the Corazon to Trinidad Poetry Festival. This is the second annual, and we're really quite excited about it. This is sponsored by Creative District. Um, it's going to be a combination of open mic, poetry out loud, readings and book signings, writing workshops. And I think more important, importantly, what we're doing is not just focused on adults, we're also reaching out into the college and the high school, uh, to get students excited about this. One of these fellows is, I think it's Molina, is named Best Solo Rap Artist in two thousand eighteen by Westworld. So, you know, that's a form of poetry as well. So anyway, that should engage the kids.
Are you gonna put that up with the college too, to get them involved?
Yeah, the college is involved, absolutely. Sorry, didn't mention that. Um, let's see, uh, the other thing, we're having a special meeting tomorrow to review efforts on, uh, filing. Uh, I've been working on it over a year, a proposal for the website. We're gonna give a demonstration. I think it's terribly important to have a website for the Creative District. Uh, it's really a way of, a lot of people don't know what Creative District does. So this will be a great forum. Facebook isn't enough. I'm gonna be speaking to the Peoriaan Club, which is, uh, you know, philanthropic group of ladies, uh, not unlike, I guess, the Alps. And, uh, talking to them about, uh, about Creative District, and how they can get involved. Uh, let's see. Lastly, uh, further to Mr. Goodall's comments, people are starting to form bocce leagues now. Can we start thinking ahead to getting the, we have astroturf, and underneath that is sand. Well, what happens is the weather kicks up all the sand. All we need to do is flatten that with, uh, I think it's a handheld cement roller. And if we can think about when we're gonna open the bathrooms, 'cause it would be nice. I mean, as soon as the weather is nice, people are gonna be out there, and it's a great activity, and it's very, it's good for building. And that's all I got.
Cool. Um, I had the pleasure of being in the St. Patty's Day Parade this past weekend, which, uh, was small but mighty, and I thought it was a great start for hopefully a future St. Patrick's Day, uh, annual event. Uh, I'm not Irish, but everyone's a little Irish on St. Patrick's Day, they say, so, no, I'm not. No, I'm not. But it was, it was great.
Is your name McLopas?
No, I'm not.
That's all, Lopez? That's, that's not me.
But, uh, I, I just wanna, you know, give a lot of kudos to not only Mr. Brad Kirby, but for other people who are really starting to step up and do a lot of things in the community. There are little comedy festivals that are happening at like the, uh, Purple Toad, and I went to the one at the Los Angeles Grill on Saturday. It's nice to have something different to do in the community. It may not be everyone's cup of tea, but I think it's always great to have more options for people to go out and have something to do. And even on the Facebook pages that I, uh, noticed, people are getting a lot of things accomplished, from the History Museum to, uh, Molly Wallace with the upcoming Comedy Bicycle Festival, which is coming through on Amtrak, which I hope can highlight the usage and the need for Amtrak through Trinidad, because it is one of the few viable ways to get almost halfway across the country, or to get to LA or Chicago. Uh, I, I think it's just something that could be utilized as a tool to enhance our, one of our multimodal stations that we have here. And, uh, it's, it's just nice that these people are coming together and really trying to do things from a grassroots level, and they're being successful. Uh, they have a, a tangible product, which is, it's fun to do. And, and again, just like with, uh, the Giddy Up Bicycles, it's something different that's adding to our community's option list. And I, I just wanted to say thank you for all those who are doing those things. Um, secondly, I got to go to the House Energy and Environment Committee meeting yesterday at the Boyd Building at TSJC Campus, and the discussion topic was Senate Bill one eighty-one. Now, right now, this is a very contentious issue, due to the fact that we have such a large industry pertaining to gas and, uh, oil wells, uh, more pertaining to natural gas, though. Uh, there was testimony made, uh, for the first two hours that I was there and able to attend, from professionals and people who have had some devastating effects, or devastating effects, rather, because of improper procedure or something that wasn't done later. Of course, you're always gonna hear about the, the traumatic, terrible stories, and, and my heart goes out to the family that, that did give the presentation, uh, Ms. Martinez from Firestone, Colorado. Uh, one of the things that I've been discussing with the CML lobbyist, uh, uh, Brandy Delang, who, uh, with CML is in support of this bill, is I wanted to get more educated on what exactly is being discussed, because we're seeing on TV how this bill is being kind of, uh, labeled as Proposition one twelve, which was voted down in the last election cycle. Uh, which Proposition one twelve and seventy-four, which kind of worked hand in hand with each other, were both, um, uh, not supported by CML. So I asked our lobbyist, why is this one being supported to where the other one wasn't? So I just wanna give some quick tidbits for people to know about, if you'd bear with me. Um, the differences right now between, uh, Senate Bill one eighty-one and Proposition one twelve is that, uh, currently there are no identified setbacks that there were with one twelve for the well locations. Um, it clarifies and codifies the local land use authority's language. So that way, if a local community or government should choose to impose any more regulations, that is up to their sole discretion. If they want to at all, they don't even have to. And I asked our lobbyists, why, why are we supporting this one now? And from what Mr. Delang said is, CML has always been in the, uh, proponenty of supporting local authority over things that go on in their community. With that being said, uh, I do see the other side of the coin, where some people are, uh, assuming the worst, where, who I spoke with, Ms. Amato in our cestra's office, if these industries go out of Trinidad, we will be losing a lot of money that could go towards a lot of school districts, especially Primera, which is heavily funded by these severance tax dollars. Um, there's also, uh, the claim that the opposition decides that it's, it's too fast of a process, it's moving too quickly. Well, to that being said, we, we have a, a Democratic Congress in our state right now, and a Democratic governor, so that goes either way, depending on what the topic is and the particular time period. Uh, so I can see how someone might make that argument. But from what the, uh, industry is saying, it's gonna make a patchwork of regulatory framework, which could lead to overregulation or turn into an overall ban. Well, from the statements that were made yesterday in that, uh, House meeting, they do not want to turn this into a ban. It's not the intention at all. It's just to prevent more incidents that, from occurring that are dangerous to human health safety, wildlife safety. Um, let me see here, there's, uh, there's a lot of interesting arguments, but I, I do wanna let people know that I did not really know a whole lot about this issue until I called our people to find out. Now, I'm sure I can call the opposition side and find out their side of the story. Um, but from how I look at it, I like the fact when a government can have more authority over what's going on in their backyard. Just like what we did with marijuana laws. The council, before I came on, chose to make sure that we had our own laws so we could regulate our town, and not just lead it to the MED, which would be a, a close analogy to what the Colorado Gas, Colorado Oil and Gas Commission is intending to do. Uh, part of the language of Senate Bill one eighty-one is that they want to change the board or commission from being more of one that fosters the industry to be more the one that regulates the industry. So, uh, I'm learning about this. I'm, I'm not quite for certain how I personally sit on this, because I would hate to see a lot of funds go away from our schools, especially in Primera, because that's one of their biggest revenue sources. I mean, they're getting a new, uh, addition to their building right now, and, and that would, something like this, if it was to be gone completely, would be detrimental. But on the other side, I see the point where we, as a community, need to start looking into more innovative and creative ways to build our communities up for other revenue sources. The days of coal, I think, are, are kind of gone. Natural gas may follow suit with that. We need to start, as leaders, thinking about new creative industries that can be sustainable and eco-friendly, yet profitable. And I think we just, uh, that, those are my two cents on that one, from my personal point, but it's, it's an interesting bill. Uh, if anyone wants to continue to look into this with me, I'm more than happy to discuss more, 'cause I got a lot more notes. But, uh, it is something that is, majority of the people in that room were opposed to it. Uh, only one person was in favor of it. So it, yeah, I think there might be a lot of misinformation being put out there through television, because it's from the natural gas industry. Of course, they want to make sure that their bottom line is secure and profitable, and I understand that, this is the free market. But at the same token, I also would like to make sure that the people who live in our hillsides that have well water don't have contamination issues, where they don't feel like they can drink that water safely, or it leaves, of difference, you know, situations in their home, where it smells like sulfur, 'cause it comes up the pipes. That's where they live. They wanna be able to have safety issues, uh, addressed, so.
I know that point. I attended the policy, uh, group meeting, and this was one of the items that we discussed. And, uh, the majority of the people, uh, there was some pretty fine discussion, and a lot of people were pretty opposed to it. And one thing that they were opposed to a lot is that changing the number, 'cause I think there's an eleven board commission, uh, right now, and I think they're gonna take, there's three people that are industry-related, they're taking that down to one and replacing it with other groups. So I'm, I, it's gonna go through, it's just a matter of how, it's gonna de- it's gonna impact our area. That's the big question.
And again, each locale has the, the ability to choose if they want to make more regulations. It's not like it's just gonna be a mandate like one twelve was going to do, where everyone had to have a twenty-five hundred foot setback. This is not a mandate, it's just leaving it up to local, uh, governments, which I think is one of the things they wanted to stress. But again, uh, one of the comments made was, well, why wouldn't these companies then want to move to a more gas-friendly state? Um, one of the questions that, that I proposed was, well, if they're, if we're not that gas-friendly, then why would they have come here to begin with, when we were a gas-friendly state? And now we're not having production levels like we did during the Bush administration. I know they set back during the Obama administration. Now we're back into a Republican administration, and they really haven't been producing more, and permits have not been pulled a lot for new wells as well. From what I understand, the biggest years of production are the first two years of a well, and we have not been getting new well permits.
Can I tell you why I think that is? 'Cause the gas price is twenty-one.
Right, exactly.
So you can't, you can't attribute it all to, well, since they're producing less, deregulation hasn't, it's, it's two hands clapping.
And when I asked that same, you know, I mentioned that, the comment made was that there is a big shale production site in Pennsylvania now that is producing a lot of natural gas that we are not shipping out to the eastern part of the country. And I said, well, if that's the case, why would they want to come back here and drill more wells if they're producing more over there and they don't need to ship it? I don't get, I didn't get a good answer, but it wasn't from a, a person in the industry. It was someone who, uh, made benefit from the, uh, industry staying here, but, uh, still, it's a question that I thought.
The other problem that came up is the permitting process, that the permitting process will probably take longer than what it has been. And that will be, could be a detriment to people wanting to go back and try to grill, so. Uh, the permitting process is another issue, I think, yeah.
I'm surprised we haven't heard from Evergreen.
They had a representative there in the meeting to listen. Uh, again, I, I could only stay for two hours at the meeting, I don't know how long it went on. And that was just for their first panel of, uh, witnesses to testify. And, uh, they did have, uh, a representative from the natural gas industry that was on that particular panel. They also had Dan Gibbs, who is now the Natural Resource Executive Director for the state. He was appointed there by, uh, the new governor, uh, former county commissioner of Summit County. And, uh, a couple of the names, a Mr. Coffin and a Mr. Robinson. I, I couldn't write fast enough where they were from, but, um, there was a, there was a decent panel, and then after two hours, they brought in another panel, and I just couldn't attend the whole time.
Regardless, it sounded like it could be a, could pose a problem for our area, depending how it's regulated, so.
So anyway, I just wanna not scare people, but it is something that is being discussed right now.
Yeah, I wanna go to that too, but I have another meeting to go to.
Really?
Yeah.
You're overscared. That's great.
Short, very short. I went to the Main Street, Historic Main Street on the liaison, and that board is just starting to get its feel. They're legit now. They're a, a recognized board, uh, for the city. And I did more, uh, question-answer type situation. I told them how they have to go through the process to vet a new, uh, member of their board, and how they have to advertise, and that. They did ask that I ask you, if you would be able to provide somebody that would take notes for that. Don't answer, just... Yeah, evidently, they, they need to have some type of staff report to get higher in the donor granting. Is that?
I think the new economic development position is assigned to the main street.
Okay.
What they're looking for is they have to have a dedicated staff person to become designated at the state.
But they also want somebody to meet.
But I don't know that we have ever assumed that staff person would take notes for them.
Okay.
The boards and commissions take their own notes.
Okay.
Uh, that staff person would be available, I, I'm speaking for Greg, so I don't know that this is correct, if you agree, but in my opinion, the staff person would be available to be a staff liaison, not an administrative assistant.
Wait, okay, I'll explain that to them. Brings up another point. When something goes bad, I'm just gonna say what Tara said.
That's exactly right. I think that's probably the appropriate response.
I think so.
Well, Tara promised.
That's when you say, did she put it in writing?
Give me a sample of your signature.
I, I just, I'm really against staff doing minutes for boards and commissions, that other people may have it different, but staff's time is really a precious resource.
I understand.
And there's a lot of projects and a lot of follow-up, and there's a lot of administrative things on this side, but minutes should be the boards and commissions' responsibility.
I will give them happy.
I'll have a tape recorder.
Okay.
Every other board is doing it.
Okay.
Welcome to the city.
Well, my report will pale in comparison to my colleague, but, um, all that has been said about boards and commissions notwithstanding, Mr. Rich Alfred was elected as a replacement to Ms. Goodall to chair the Arts and Culture Commission. And that's all I gotta say, except for, Mr. Valentine, be left. Are we all squared away with the gas problem? Are we getting there?
We're working.
We're getting there, oh.
Yeah, from my end, uh... Yeah, from my end, uh, a couple of weeks ago, of course, uh, prior to our Fishes Peak celebration, Greg and I attended the Goco meeting that was held at the Holiday Inn. Uh, went bright early in the morning, uh, first of all, till nine o'clock, and had a little meeting after that, but then went back later on in the afternoon. And it was an interesting meeting, uh, they gave out some additional funding, they awarded some other food in the townyard, and the states and some funds. Uh, but I was surprised, as large of a board that they are, I think there's like, I counted 27 or 28 people that were on that commission, so they're pretty large. But it was interesting listening to what, well, I was there anyhow.
I was surprised how many lawyers. There's a lot of lawyers on that board.
Yeah, you were there for a bit, weren't you?
I was there, and I had the urgency of the party, yeah.
Uh, the other thing too, is as a matter of fact, Mr. Deed and I, we attended the Opportunity's own presentation.
I was there too.
And you were there too?
Yeah.
So all three of us were there, yeah, that was an interesting presentation, very informative. Uh, uh, we also met, uh, I'm not sure if it was the same day or not, with the SBA and the SBDC. Greg and I met with him as well, and they were just here to, uh, discuss, uh, you know, if there's any banks locally that are offering some of these services. And I told them that I would check with any of the local banks, and the first one that I checked was, was with, uh, First National. And I talked to Ben Eisman, and he said that they're doing the SBA, I guess on a limited basis, uh, but they're doing something, what he was telling me. Uh, but the SBDC, that's another area that I don't think anybody's doing any funding through that, through that group. I attended the Southwest, the Southwest Chief Amtrak meeting in Denver. Uh, there's a, a concern, uh, why another group is trying to come up with another rail commission, which would be conflicting. Um, so we're real concerned in that, we're trying, we're gonna try to invite them into our meeting to see if maybe they wanna join, you know, kinda come together, so I'm not sure what's gonna happen with that.
But do they have any good ideas?
We don't know, it's just that we know that, uh, and it, it, it sounds like it's more of a group that is concentrating on the northern end of the state. But the long-term, uh, for the Southwest Amtrak chief is the northern part of the state as well, that's just long-term. So we'll, we'll see if they come to our next meeting. Uh, our next meeting is going to be held in Colorado Springs, I have a travel, I don't remember, so. What we're gonna do is we're gonna start alternating meetings between some of the communities as well. Like one month it'll be an online community, the other meeting will be in, in Denver. So we're gonna be doing that. Uh, there's also going to be another possible, uh, Tiger Grant Nine, uh, Tiger Grant Ten, uh, that may be coming up, and they'll be looking, they're gonna be looking for sponsorship. I'm not sure if, uh, uh, Lahana may be looking at that, but if they don't, we may, I may ask to get through, I'm not sure what, it's all gonna get, what's gonna be involved. Uh, but that's something that I'll get some more information, uh, as well. Uh, we discussed the, the Pueblo Through Car Review, uh, the Pueblo Through Car. And what that would be is, an Amtrak coming into Lahana, they would take a car, move it to Pueblo, move it back to Lahana, and come back through here and on south. It's kind of a funky way of doing things. But that's a discussion that's been on the table since the inception of the Southwest Chief, so we discussed that quite a bit. Uh, we also have to update our charter, because now that we have, you know, a couple of years under our belt, and we have a, a new director hired, uh, we're reviewing the charter to see if there's any changes. And there's probably quite a few changes that are going to occur with that. Uh, our director, Randy Raubberger is his name. And, uh, I've been talking with the Chamber of Commerce to pre, do a presentation, and he may do a presentation at the luncheon in June. Uh, I've gotta contact, uh, him to see if he's available in June. Uh, and I'll let council know if he's gonna be there that way, I'm sure councilmen, the public will wanna be there as well.
And who again is Randy?
He's our, he's, he's our director for, uh, the Amtrak Southwest Chief Commission, that we hired him a couple of months ago. Um, last week, I was asked to do a presentation at the Mont Carmel Leadership Group, and these are a group of kids that are interested in leadership down the road. And as a matter of fact, uh, Tony Haas, Commissioner Tony Haas and I were there, and we talked to the kids that were there, just talked to them about leadership and what it all involves from the different entities, from the county commission side as well as the city council side. It was interesting listening to these, uh, students, and, you know, they had some good thoughts and ideas and what they wanted to do. I attended the, uh, open house at the doctor's, uh, oh, the hospital doctor's open house a couple of nights ago. You were there, weren't you there? No, you were, I thought you were there. You're at work.
I might have been in the hospital, but I wasn't there for the session.
Uh, also attended the Artokid Open House on Saturday. I know that, uh, Brad had asked me to be at that thing, but it kinda conflicted with babysitting and going to his or going to Artokid, which I had promised to be there. Um, attended, uh, the last Tourism Council Work Session, which was a week ago. Uh, could not attend today because of other issues. Uh, one of the things that came up with is, uh, bike stenciling downtown for bikes coming through. I'm not sure that they're talking about it, I'm not sure if some of that, to line out some of the roadways in town for, with stencils. I'm not, that could be something to, to look at. Uh, they approved the RPM Bike Tour. Uh, there's a bike presentation, April the 11th, in the Finer Room by someone, I can't remember who it was. So it's 11th, uh, April the 11th, I don't have an exact time at this point. Another thing they talked about was ambassador training for the business community. And I think that's pretty important, because one of the things that happens is you go into a business, and they ask, you know, what's going on in Trinidad? Most of the time, employees don't know. So they wanna try to sponsor an ambassador training, so hopefully, maybe some of, uh, the, the local businesses uh, can send one or two of their employees there and say, wow, this is what's going on in Trinidad this week or next week or whatever. So I think, uh, so they're looking at that. I think it would be a good deal for, good thing for the community.
When I worked in Summit County, they had the Summit Resort Chamber Commerce who did that. And what they would do is to entice their, uh, staff members throughout the community, they had these forms. And if they got a good review, they would be applicable for Employee of the Month. And they would get prizes, so that different businesses would contribute like a dinner certificate or for gear, a certificate, and at the end of the year, they would have Employee of the Year, where they would send them on a trip to like Cancun or something. Now granted, they have a lot more money up there, but I think it was a great idea, maybe something like that could be, go towards that. Because, uh, my employer at the time, he really stressed that upon us as employees, we try to be better to our community and also to our tourists.
Well, that's one thing that it would become, not only the, the, the tourism center offering the information, but it would be the entire community.
Mm-hmm, so.
That's all I have. Greg?
Um, we've been asked to write a letter of support for, uh, possibly seeking a grant for Senate Bill One. That's the one dealing with opioid issues. Uh, we are not included in the actual bill, but they're willing to have two more counties in sort of, and get Los Angeles County involved in it. We would be the only local government or the only county with, um, a medical provider on board with this thing. So we should have a pretty good chance of being involved in it. Uh, I thank Mont Carmel for stepping up and wanting to be involved in it, and they're going all hot, they're ready. I think that'll be a benefit to us in the long term. Um, I'm on the committee for the Southern Mountain Bicycle Loop Study. It's, I think that's kind of the name. Um, but that's the one that goes around Highway 12 from here back to Walsenburg. I participated in a conference call with the consultant last week, and the first meeting of this committee, I think, is very early in June. So I need to do some background work to make a lot of progress. I also volunteered to serve on the Challenge Studio. That is, um, SERT was one of the recipients of a grant to participate in this. It's through the Downtown Colorado Inc., they have an upcoming conference in Aspen, and if they're seeking ways to, uh, create a more sustainable revenue source for SERT. So I think that's very admirable. The, uh, gas outage that happened at just about noon today, we are still working on that and, uh, making progress. It's, it's slow when you have to turn gas back on, because you turn it off at every building, then turn the gas on, and turn it back on to make sure all the pilot lights light. Not everybody has electronic, um, ignition, so we gotta make sure it's done safely. Uh, the first water remodel is done, and I wanna thank Johnny Anderson for stepping up and helping us finish this project. It was nice. It was nice to see progress being made for the month. So, uh, project looks great, and they've even put a thing like this picture out here on the downtown downstairs windows.
I saw it, it was nice.
Looks really nice. And also thanks to Town Beach for shepherding this thing through, 'cause, uh, it, it looks like it just should have always been there if you walked in there, it fits really well with the space. Um, with the Crazy French Ranch, the process is beginning to develop, or actually, right now, looking for a consultant to help with developing the master plans. I'm going to send them the RFP that was used for this Southern Mountain Loop Study, so if they need to pull some information from it, they can do that. We've submitted the information that was requested to possibly make some progress. I'm getting an easement from BNSF, that was like a week and a half ago, and still haven't heard anything back. So, other than one person, the, the person that Mike sent it to said, I'll let my boss know I got this, as far as that. It's very frustrating, 'cause we need to get the sewer line upgraded and replaced, and until we get an easement or right away from them, we're just dead in the water.
On that note, like I said, I mentioned to you that Pete Rickenhouse, who's on our Amtrak Commission, he has been associated with, uh, BNSF. And I mentioned I might give him a call seat, he hasn't yet been on there.
He's, he's working with us.
He was God, yeah, okay.
He's working with Mike and Greg.
So it's, uh, it just, working with the railroads, I'm just like watching concrete dry.
Well, like we say, you're on all the steps from county to city to everybody, and then there's God, and then there's the railroad, you know?
That's all I know.
No, I did forget to mention, uh, recreational marijuana did fail in New Mexico.
It did?
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Really?
How did you know it did fail?
So the owner of the property up there where I'm at called me up as soon as, uh, it came out, was advertised that it did fail in New Mexico. They figured it'll be another year.
The House or the Senate?
The Senate, I believe it failed.
Who was the vote, do you know?
I just, oh, he was anxious to call. Gotta get them other RP spots and stuff, 'cause tourism's happening. That's interesting, so.
Well, it's got, is it?
That's interesting. I think we all might think about what changes we wanna make to the quarter.
Okay.
'Cause that's gonna be on the ballot. When do we need to get?
Probably early August would be when you'd have to have everyone find out.
Maybe this is a little bit early, but you might think about it, but I know of one.
Someone brought that up, or Pat, Ms. Fletcher brought that up, that we really need to hit the points. People are asking about the marijuana, I know we're taking little steps to, this is what we're doing with the money. We're getting that out there, because the last thing we want is our one cent to not pass, because, well, they got all that marijuana money. So we need to, we need to show accomplishments with, uh, what we've done with the money we had, so people will be more out to approve that.
I talked, I talked to Audra, and we're probably gonna put that on the ballot this year in case something happens. We'll have another year to, to work on it, so.
And Pat, are you coming to the meeting tomorrow?
Good, that's good.
Well, the council balled out on us tonight, so we can't get any, agree from here, so. With that, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, I guess that makes a second. All in favor?
Bye.